To be closer. Jeff, do they need to stand there in view?
Not necessarily.
So as you know, at a workshop, we don't consider the merits of the application. You don't have to defend the application. We just evaluate the application for correctness, completeness, and we consider whether the type of variance needed is correctly defined. Why don't you tell us briefly what the project consists of?
So we're proposing to construct a one-story, one-car garage at the northwest corner of the lot. So it requires, we believe, it requires a side yard and a rear yard variance. The new garage would replace a former garage, which was removed due to a structural failure of it several years ago. Concrete macing units failed. So only the north wall of that old garage remains. So the new garage would be in the same location, and that northwest corner sits at the end of the driveway. But instead of building exactly where it was before, they want to push it further to the east because they don't want the new garage to rest on that retaining wall because that's what failed. They want to move it so it's going to have its own foundation. So it'll actually encroach less than the old garage had encroached. We looked at other locations of where to put it, and it really, there really is no other practical location because it's at the end of their existing driveway. And the lot is restrained because it's a non-conforming lot. And also, the proposed garage would follow the pattern on Orchard Street of the existing rear lock detached garages which exist. And we believe it'd be an improvement upon the old garage. So that's it in a nutshell.
Right.
So the materials that we submitted are the existing current survey. And then I also include the 2016 survey showing the former garage that was demolished. And then the proposed survey is a large drawing. And that shows that the side yard setback that we're requesting is nine feet and the rear yard setback is two and a half feet. And then the other thing we submitted is the plan and elevations of the new proposed garage. And also just some photographs for context. And the photographs also include the existing remains of the prior garage and the photo of the prior garage as well. And the zoning conformance part is in there. The application itself, the owner's consent letter, everything should be in there if we need.
By any chance, was the previous garage ever declared unsafe by an authority?
No. What actually happened in terms of the structural failure was we were replacing the retaining wall next to the garage. And it was thought at the time that the retaining wall underneath the garage was sound. In the middle of replacing the retaining wall next to the garage, the retaining wall under the garage started to move. And that is what caused the concrete blocks to fail within the garage. And so we had to immediately remove the garage.
Okay, so I think, just to be precise, the provision in the zoning code that applies here is 134-17A, subsection A, B, capital A, or A1B, better. And that reads, "Such building or garage shall be set back 10 feet from any lot line and, if separated from the principal building, shall not be located less than 10 feet from it." And that's the general rule for garages. Your previous garage may have been pre-existing non-conforming. It may have pre-existed the code, but you don't inherit any grandfathered forgiveness because the garage was demolished and you're building a new one from scratch. 134-17A1 also says, "All such buildings and garages in the aggregate shall not occupy more than 30% of the area of the required rear or side yard." It looks like you're well under that.
Yeah.
That will not be a problem.
We're also above the distance to the house.
Right, yeah. I looked at your list of neighbors, and it looks complete. It looks like a sufficient list of everyone who should be notified.
So am I right that it's two variances? The rear yard setback and the side yard setback?
Yes, yes, it would count as two. The code says 10 feet from any lot line, and there's two lot lines that are encroached on them.
Does that suppression the retaining wall?
Yeah.
Where's it? At the back?
Yes, it is.
It's like going down from the back because of the big elevator?
Right.
It's on the survey.
Like it's this, where the black fences? The fence is on top of the retaining wall?
So that one-story frame shed that you see is way down.
Right.
It's like a cycle like that, right?
Oh, I see, yeah.
Well, in the hearing, your primary job will be to give us reasons why you need this variance. And that means be prepared to explain why you couldn't achieve your goal by some other means that doesn't require variance. And also, any other, any factors in the neighborhood. If there are similar garages positioned in a similar way, and you could get photographs of them, that wouldn't hurt to help establish the character of the neighborhood. Especially as visible from the street. This would be apparently visible to the public from the street, so.
Right, yes. Yeah, I have some other photos of the other garages. I didn't include them in your packet because I didn't want to overwhelm you with stuff. But yeah, these are their neighbors. So it is definitely a pattern, yeah.
Yeah, all photos would be, you may be welcome to see how this all sets up. And also, maybe a Google aerial map. Pointing out where your property is so we can see where similar garages are.
Yeah, I have that too. But I just didn't want to, it's just a big packet of stuff.
Okay, that's perfect.
Yeah, but for the public hearing, I can show that.
Yeah, you're welcome to email that to me ahead of time, and I'll distribute it to the other board members so we can.
Okay, this is like the start of the PowerPoint presentation for the public hearing. I just started putting it together, but I can send it to you.
Well, if you haven't prepared for the meeting, that's just good.
The other thing I was trying to figure out was how it would look to neighbors if it right is on the edge of the retaining wall and you have neighbors below. Is that, so I.
It's actually set back further than the old garage was. So the old garage sat on the concrete block retaining wall, and we're setting it back seven foot, seven and a half feet from the property line. So it's not going to be right on top of this neighbor. It's actually going to be set further in than the old one was.
So if there were few photos that show a sense of what it would look like from four neighbors, that's helpful too. That may be our use of it.
Right, the reason being is that, you know, as Eric mentioned, there may, you know, we're looking at community character to see how other properties may have their garages. But at the same point, kind of so many variables about including that some of those garages may have pre-existed, you know, the zoning code. So while you can point to them and say, "Community character," you still have the hurdle of seeking a variance that may be relatively substantial on the side property lot line. So, you know, everything is something that's weighing, you know.
This is the situation is different.
But I'm just trying, I mentioned this just so that when you come here for the hearing, you can see that difference and that you are aware of it. That, you know, there are criteria that the state has to go through. There are five of them, and you're well, probably first in that. And so one of them mentions community character. But, you know, there's other criteria where, you know, the least variance required in order to really suit the applicant's needs is what this board would tend to grant.
Right.
Looking at the whole of it and the fact that the zoning code is in place just to help regulate development on property lots so that the neighbors around don't get a McMansion.
Right.
And so there's just parameters. You look at everything. That's the point.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we looked at another location that would require a variance, and it would mean reconfiguring the driveway and putting it into the yard. And there's a beautiful rare specimen cherry tree that would also have to be removed in order to swing that driveway back to a garage that would comply. So it's not optimal. And the yard isn't very large because it's such a small non-conforming lot. So to have to push that in would also break up the yard.
How long has that tree been around? What is the exact nature of it?
It's a conifer cherry and.
They had a certified arborist look at it.
Twenty-five.
And the reason why I ask is that's another, one of the factors. We have to weigh that too, you know. You're saying that we can only build here because of that. You know, while we may not be tree experts, we need as much information as we can.
Yeah, I have pictures of the tree too that I brought to my pocket. Talks about the tree. But reconfiguring the driveway, then they would also should take down that fence that you have there between the yard and the driveway. So I guess it could be done, but it's just not optimal.
Also, just character-wise, it would look stranger to have the garage in the middle of the yard.
Of the backyard, right.
As opposed to, you know.
Where it's at the end of the driveway.
Right, right, yeah.
I get it. I'd look, I shed 17 feet off of my right side property line to make my neighbor happy.
Right, right.
Momentum is 22 feet off of the back line, and so it's sitting in the middle of my yard.
Yeah.
Well, their neighbor across.
So I know what it's like to have something look awkward.
Their neighbor across the street, their new garage, that's the new garage, right?
Yes, that is a new garage.
And they put it at the end of their driveway, so that's on their lot line. So it's not like that was old.
Well, if you have information on that, if you have the address or whatever.
Yeah, it's 18 Orchard Street.
Right, I'm not sure if the application came before us on that.
It did. But not for, it was, it would have been at this.
It would have been the zoning board, but it would have been a different, earlier zoning board.
Yeah, but the same code. So it didn't predate the code.
Right, but we, we just took a look at it. So we decided at the same point, it's probably close to the side property line. And is it on the same side of the street you're on?
The opposite side.
Yeah. And so if you have a picture of that?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Everything seems in good shape to me. Do you see any crow's teeth or anything?
No, the only question I have that's probably not pertinent is this comment. The retaining wall, is that, is the retaining wall just for your property? Or does that extend any further? It is just your property retaining wall?
It's set inside their property line, like on the survey.
Yes, it is, right. And there is another retaining wall next to my retaining wall. My neighboring, my neighbor's property. But it's a different kind of retaining wall, different material. And it was different material even before we replaced our old. So they're very separate retaining walls. Yeah, most of, I think most of that side of Orchard Street is up on a retaining wall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there isn't anything behind, it's not as though you're backed up to another line of homes. There's space behind you to a bigger property, right? It's not as though it's.
Correct.
In other parts of the village where you've got the retaining wall, homes that have their own backyards individually backed up to it.
There is a backyard behind our retaining wall, but there's no home structure directly behind our retaining wall. The home structure is next to our neighbor's retaining wall.
That's why I Google map, overhead view, as John mentioned. We see this also at the stand. Will this, will this garage be looming over some patio?
It's coming over a shed. But it's way down. In the Google map, you can see, like, this is their house here, and that's the house of the backyard that backs up to theirs. So there's a lot of space between.
Right.
The neighbors really aren't going to be. I mean, the neighbor that I think would be impacted the most is their neighbor here.
Right.
Seventeen, number seventeen. Yeah, that's the more critical.
They spoken to their neighbor.
Right.
They're happy to have something new because what's there now is quite horrible. It's a concrete wall.
Concrete wall. But they also, they want, it does provide them with a lot of privacy that wouldn't be provided in their yards with another kind of structure that was in the middle of the yard or even a fence. Gives them more privacy simply.
Makes sense.
So just out of curiosity, the neighbor at seventeen, that is that neighbor to the south, the north, and west? See how light would be?
The north.
That would be to the north.
Yes.
So the sunlight would be coming from your southerly property line across your property towards your proposed garage, right?
So this is west and south.
Right.
And east and north, right?
Yeah, it does seem.
So the north wall is just a solid wall.
The garage would be kind of casting a shadow is what you're getting at.
Right.
Throughout the day. On to seventeen.
And to the rear of your property and that retaining wall, and you say there's a drop down, how far down the same drop?
Well, if you can, if you look at the photo. Obviously, the height of the shed. Because the roof of the shed is co-planar with their grade.
And so the height of the shed is approximately?
Here, you can kind of see, like, this is a photo showing that drop in the roof of the shed. I haven't gone to their property to measure that shed, but I guess I could.
I think it's one story. It's about 10 feet from their retaining wall.
10 feet?
I, I don't know if it, it's probably in our file somewhere because we recently replaced it up, our file, the location.
Well, I could go and measure the wall. Like, I could stand here at the fence and just throw the tape down.
Yeah.
How tall it is, okay, so I'll measure that wall.
From the picture of the prior garage here.
I'll be eighteen.
Sorry.
Sorry.
The picture of the prior garage to then what would be the north is a wooden plank fence?
That's right.
Is that your fence or your neighbor's?
It's our neighbor's. And that fence is still there, yes.
And that's about what, six feet, approximately? If you can tell.
It looks, it looks to be about, so, yes, I would say so.
And that is your neighbor's fence?
Yes.
If we were to hold a public hearing on this application at our next regular meeting, which is September 16th, would you be available 7:30 PM?
I believe so.
I would, but I'm not sure if the notices would be able to, because he's got to send me the notice, and I have to send it to all the neighbors, and then they have to return them to me, and then I have to bring them to him.
Well.
And that's kind of, in the past. In the past, it's been quite tight. And then, yeah, I mean, I'm personally ready.
Okay.
We are ready, but I just find that sometimes people don't return the things on time.
Well, actually, there's no requirement that they return receipts.
Okay.
We don't check that. We only check the mailing receipts. So the postmarked receipt you get from the post office. And that has to be postmarked by Monday, this coming Monday. So it is feasible, and people do it. The normal pattern would be that tomorrow, I would email you the notice itself. You would have to get it mailed by following, by Monday, this coming Monday.
Right.
With the stamp receipts. And if that, as long as you do that, you're with it, you meet the 10-day prior notice.
And then he has to put it in the newspaper so that he can find.
He can do that, he will do that.
Yes, it's a little complicated because I'm actually leaving for vacation tomorrow morning. So depending on what time, I would get your email, and then I would have to.
Okay.
I mean, I have all the envelopes ready, and it's certified mail return receipt requested.
Correct.
Right, so I have all that ready. So all I need is your notice to stick them in, and then.
Well, you could give me the envelopes and I can stick them in.
And then, can you email it to her as well? I can forward it to you.
Sure.
And you can get it to herself in mind?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Keep in mind, Monday's a federal holiday.
Oh, it's, oh, Labor Day.
Yeah. The post office will be closed on Monday.
Yeah, that puts a monkey wrench in it because by the code, it's got to be a 10-day notice. And Monday just barely meets that. So it sounds like.
Well, when would the next one after that?
Unless you could get it tomorrow. If I email to you by tomorrow morning, and you get to the post office by the end of the day.
Or Saturday, the post office.
Or Saturday, yeah, they do it Saturday.
I could do that, yeah, I can get it there tomorrow.
It's really up to you if you want to go through that. If you can succeed in doing that.
All right, I can resolve this.
The next date wouldn't be until October 7th, so.
Oh, you don't have one at the end of September?
Right, two meetings a month, so.
Right, but it is one, oh, I see. So it's not every two weeks, it's two meetings a month.
The first and third, Thursdays.
So I thought maybe the next one would be two weeks after that. Got it, okay. So we can try, we can certainly try.
Okay. If you don't succeed, then I'll have to send you a new notice with a different date on it. So, but I'll send you one tomorrow morning. And if you can, if you find you can get to the post office in time.
Either tomorrow or Saturday.
Then we're all set.
Yep.
Because you'll need to get the sign from Jeff to post in front of your property by Monday.
Right. How would he do, how would he do, how would she do that if you guys are closed on Monday, though?
You could grab, on the way out.
Okay.
There's one, Madeline, in my office, behind, next to the printer. There's one that's already set for the zoning board, so you could just grab that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go for it, all right.
Okay.
And you wanted me to send you these additional photos too?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
Sure.
But if you, if you do, if you will have them all ready to hand out at the hearing itself, you could wait till then, you know.
Okay.
That would be fine.
So I could print this out and give it one to each of you at the hearing, which is basically a copy of the PowerPoint for the public.
We could then look at them while you're explaining.
Okay.
And it would be fine, that would be.
I don't want this to be contradictory to the code. But is it required that the photos are printed? Or is that something that could just be uploaded to the site?
Yes.
We could just view that from our own devices as long as you're, you guys are okay with that?
Yeah, I can send it to Jeff tomorrow.
That way you know.
Or tonight or something, yeah.
Is there Wi-Fi?
There is working Wi-Fi now here.
Okay, because I would need that password to access photos. Because I couldn't access anything with my emails right now, so. But go ahead, I'll let you finish, and I have just a few more questions.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing on this application in two weeks, September 16th.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so unanimous?
I did have some questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
I'm trying to estimate, what is the height of the old garage? What was the height?
Oh, we.
Basically, it's one story, right, in almost any?
That is correct, yes. And if we know the height of the doors.
Or the fence.
That's right, the doors, the doors, we're going to reuse the old doors? Because they're.
Doors were the best thing about them.
So the doors are seven foot two, so.
So.
So the, and you guys measure the height to the.
So that looks to be about 10 to 11 feet.
To the ridge or to the middle of the ridge?
Up to the point. It looks to be about 11 feet at the most. If it's 7'2", because then 11 to 12, maybe it would look at the highest of it.
Right, so our, our point, our ridge is at 15.
It's at 15, right.
And the reason is because we were mimicking the slope of the existing house. And so this old garage was a very flat slope. Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand, I see.
Yeah, so we just wanted it to look nicer.
Right, and.
So that's why it's taller.
So in essence, there will be a second floor in there?
No, there's no second floor.
Then it's just going to be rafters?
That's right. Yeah, it's not tall enough to stand up in. It's not an attic. And there's no dorm or anything, it's just a, a loop.
And are there any restrictions that you know of elevation of the accessory buildings?
The code limits it to one and a half stories. A story is defined as no more than 50% being higher than seven feet inside. So this is well under that, if that's what you're wondering about.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah, that's.
I didn't go through the mathematics on it.
Because the total height is 15.
We considered that when we designed it.
Yeah, the total height is 15 feet.
Right.
So there's no way it could exceed.
But I was told that the height is to the middle of the, of the gable. So that would be 11 feet. That's defined as the.
Well, there's a formula for it. I'd have to go through it again. We went through it just about three months ago.
Yeah, no, there's no way, you look at the dimensions. It's 15 feet to the top of the ridge and nine feet to the ceiling.
Yeah, there's a calculation to it, I just.
The whole thing is under 7 feet, so 0% is over 7 feet.
Right, it has to be under half the square footage of the floor below.
Right.
And that's what it would work out to be. Okay, so I got that. And just last question. What is the purpose of the chain link fence between the garage and your property, separating your driveway and garage from your property exterior? Is that accurate or am I?
Originally, it's not really, well, it is kind of separating the garage, I guess, from the property. I mean, originally, it was my dog, for my dog, so that.
Yeah, originally, it sort of created a boundary. Because the wall of the garage was continual with it.
Right, to the back with the retaining wall. So it made a continual fenced-in yard.
But now her dog isn't.
Yes, my dog passed away, so.
All right, well, that's, it was just curious thing because we just had an application, and probably other ones before is coming, where a six-foot fence, they didn't want it in the middle of their yard, and there you go.
Well, I don't know if that fence would even remain because.
We'd have to move the garage up, so.
Yeah, we'd have to move it, so we'd have to take that fence down. We don't need it anymore anyway. Yeah, we'd move the garage, so we'd have to take that fence down, we don't need it anymore anyway, because of the dogs, so.
Right, I, I'm just pointing it out to the board that, you know, here, here you got an example where fence was in the middle of the yard, and our arguments are always made different ways, and it's just, nobody, and the applicant said, there's no way we want to fence in the middle of our yard, but they had to protect the pool that they put in.
Right.
People entering it.
Yeah.
So they wanted to put it at a certain height over the, the norm, on their board, on their property line, or just off. So, again, everything is a variable, but I'm just looking at different things and pointing it out to the board.
Should we indicate that that fence would be removed in the drawing, or, because it would have to move, you can't, because it's, right now, it's blocking where the.
No, it's, it would not be, it would not be the, any business of, of our.
Yeah, that's not before us right now.
Okay, okay. Right, because it's not on.
But it was a question I had.
If, if photos and any other documentation about the tree might be relevant.
Yeah, I have that.
Because it would help us, it would be, serve as a reason for your, your proposal.
Do you have the report from the other side?
Um, I mean, it was verbal.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
But I have pictures of it, so, I think it's best if I just email this to you Friday night.
Sure. So Megan, I will, tomorrow morning, I'll email you the notice.
Great.
Mail it to everybody on your list.
Okay.
By certified mail return receipt requested, postmarked, and you'll get back postmarked receipts, should be done by Saturday.
Great.
And then you have to bring those receipts with you to the hearing, to show.
Okay.
It would, if you have any way of scanning them, it would be better, or best, if you could scan them and email them to me for approval or for checking before the hearing.
Okay, well, by then I'll be back, because I'm only away for a week, so I can get them from you and take it over. I don't, I don't want to bother my client with all that paperwork, yeah.
Just it's always good to get that out of the way, because the worst thing would be.
Oh, okay, so maybe you just send it as soon as you get it.
If they have.
There was some defect in the receipts, the worst thing would be for not to know until the hearing.
Have to postpone, yeah.
So when you say the receipt, you mean these green things?
Yes, exactly.
Right, but I have them addressed to my house.
Oh, that, no, I don't mean that, I don't mean those cards, I mean, the, the post office clerk will stamp a, a paper tag
Who gives us a receipt, yes.
for each envelope, one for each.
Right. Yes, so it's these, these little green guys?
It's like, they tear off, yeah, they'll tear off part of that and give it back.
So they'll just get those tomorrow, and afterwards, and then I will just scan them and send them to you.
Exactly, they'll get those, and they should be, and they should be legibly postmarked with the date.
Okay.
That's the key thing, so it just shows you mailed to the appropriate people ten days or more before the hearing. That's all, all we need to know.
And we'll pick up the sign now, okay. And I can put this sign up tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And at the hearing, bring an affidavit, there's a blank affidavit form in the zoning Z B A application that attests about the sign, that it's.
That it's posted.
Yeah, that it was posted for X number of days, and so on, so you just have to bring, fill it out, sign it, and bring it to the hearing to give us, give it to us, to testify that the sign was in place as required.
Okay.
That's right, does anyone else have any other comments? Right, thank you very much, we look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
You could grab this sign, it's one in my office.
Okay.
It's next to the printer right behind my desk.
So board members, hold on to this application, because we will use it again in two weeks. Let's take a moment to welcome John back. Good to see you again, John.
Yeah, I just took a hike to the Grand Canyon.
Appalachian Trail.
So I had, I found the affidavit to give her.
Okay.
So, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was walking over here, and I was like, dang, this is as far as I've ever walked in the last month and a half. The parts are really slow to dissolve.
Thanks, John.
Good luck.
Thank you, goodnight.
And not having done that, I got the dime and everything, I did it done. Went to a Calpol hospital, they didn't have a human, just really tell them, you know, I needed for what I had.
Wow.
I had, I had the exact opposite situation, I'm failing at that, you know, high and high card. So they should have cut it off, they did, you know, hit it off.
Application?
Yeah, this was, this is a revised application, and it's something I've added to the agenda, it was not on the, the agenda I sent out. We, this is Three High Street, we, we had a workshop at the last meeting with the applicant and the architect, and they made considerable changes based on the discussion, and they have scaled back the application a lot. So the only, the only, well, we clarified, at the workshop, we clarified that because of the narrow lot exception, their side yard, their minimum side yard is seven and a half feet, not ten feet. So that caused them to change their, their drawing, and they also don't, we learned during the workshop, they don't need a variance for lot coverage, so there's now a new drawing, if you see drawing F zero one, which shows the, that little green triangle? That is the only, the only area that calls for a variance.
In the seven and a half foot setback?
Yes, given a seven foot, seven and a half foot setback, what they're doing is, that currently is a one story portion of the house, they want to add a second story, keeping the footprint the same, and.
So this, this is an overhang situation, or?
I'm sorry, they will be extending the footprint on the, on the south side, keeping it the same on the north side. So they, they will be encroaching on the side yard, on the south side, for, to, to the, so that the setback there will now be six feet four and a half inches, rather than seven feet six inches. That, so that, that's the one variance that they need now, and so the question before the board is, would you like to, they told me they would be available for hearing in two weeks, if you all are interested in holding one then. Everything else about their application is fine, we went over it at the workshop, the list of neighbors is, is, is correct, all the paperwork, other paperwork is in, so we just have a slightly different, a reduced scale to the variance.
Got me comfortable with the September sixteenth.
Right, you're getting two done at one, and just get them out. Just curious, is this, is this going to be like a, sort of a jutting out here of the second story pass?
No, I think, so this is showing setback lines.
Right.
Right, and this is the building.
Right now, the current building is there, right, but they're showing the proposed, oh, what?
I think it's just making a straight.
Oh, it's pointing out where it is in relation to the line, okay.
That's my understanding of it.
Okay, I get it, makes sense, good. And this place is located at Three High Street.
Do they, in the packet, did they have photos?
I got the original here.
So the setback on the, the other side of the property is, is this the property line? So the building is a lot closer to that one, but it's grandfathered.
Right, it's a, exactly, it's a preexisting nonconforming building with a really open, just a hair under two feet setback on the north side.
Well, that weighs a little bit into over here, but it's so de minimis here, on, on the, on the need that they have for this side.
And just, because I think you'd be interested in it, John, at the bottom, below the existing planter, if you move down, it says existing shed to be removed, that's also why the block coverage is reduced.
So it all falls under thirty?
No, it is still over thirty, but it is less than it was before.
Right.
So it's a missing, there's a missing there.
Just, just out of curiosity, how far, how much was it over thirty?
It's, it's there, it's there on the drawing, if you look at the drawing F zero one.
F zero one, I got it.
Upper, upper right, so the lot coverage is broken down there.
Oh, I got it, so it's forty one percent?
Existing forty two point five, proposed forty one point three.
Got it.
And since, so it's a preexisting nonconforming lot coverage that is being reduced.
Got you.
So they don't need a variance, since they're not increasing, it's a preexisting nonconformity that is not being increased.
Right, and I, you know, we'll mention all that, right, in, in kind of a resolution.
Laura, to answer your question, no, they, they did not give us an updated zoning conformance worksheet, so I will ask them for that.
It seems like most of it's in here, but it's kind of helpful when it's at the.
Yeah, yeah, and they also, there were no photos in the original application, so it's not a requirement, but I will tell them. After their case.
We should sort of put that into, just so people can know where the photos, if you need it.
Yeah, that's a good point, I was, I'm going to, I want to talk later about, in general, about the applications.
Okay, good.
Following up on something we said earlier.
Great.
So, let me just, they can know about this.
So we make a, did we make a motion for the hearing, or?
No, no.
But we haven't even advised them, either.
Oh, I checked with them today, and they said they were available.
Okay.
Should I make a motion?
Sure.
So, um, the date of it, the seventh, seventeen?
Sixteen, but.
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen, so I make a motion to hold the hearing on Three High Street on September sixteenth. That's the application for Three High Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous vote?
With or without the applicants?
They'll be here, I'm pretty sure. Now, the next thing I wanted to talk about was the draft resolution on Ten B Street, I printed it out, and I left my printout at home, so I can run back and get it.
I have it in front of me, I can share it, I've edited it, John, you want me to hand it down?
Well, you know, I did not, I was not here when you.
Yeah, I wasn't either, that's a push to the.
But I, I know what the nature of the project was.
Well, I guess, given properly, then.
I'm not going to review it.
Well, I wonder if we can, without a quorum, if we can approve.
Well, you do have a, were you here?
No.
Yeah, if just two of us can't, can't approve a reservation, we'll have to wait anyway.
No. Yeah. No. And Donald will not be held up by.
No, he's already going to the H D R B, so I, I always, after I make a decision, I always tell the building inspector, so she, so that she knows she can go ahead. So, all right, well, let's wait on that.
It's stupid, yeah, we couldn't remotely get her opinion on it, but to get it done, but we are open hearings, so.
Yeah, she was, her house had some problems with the rain, with the flooding, so she's dealing with that.
This is your first time out.
Yeah, Charlotte's also the building inspector in the Marinerneck.
Oh, gosh.
So if you've seen the news, I mean, they've got, you know, north of the city, they probably got hit the worst.
Oh, wow.
Because I spoke to her this morning, and she, she was still stuck in the Marinerneck.
Is that near the Sawmill, or, or not the Sawmill, the Hutcheson River? I wonder if she is part of the.
Well, they have the Marinerneck River in its, in of itself.
Right.
Down there, so it's, yeah.
The next item was the minutes of August nineteenth, Jeff's still working on them, that's fine, we'll just do that at the next meeting. There are no other items on the agenda, but I did want to talk, Jeff, I wanted to go back to something we started talking about, which is the question of the format of applications, I, I looked back at the code to see what strictly is required, and I don't see anything about eight copies, or, the, there's a chapter called Procedure, that says, let's see here, it's ten point, ten dash twenty five.
For the village code?
Yeah, ten twenty five. All right, it says, all appeals and applications made to the board shall be in writing on forms prescribed. The form to be used in applying for a variance or a special permit is attached to this chapter and may be amended from time to time by the village board, that's all I could find about. So what we, the question on my mind here is, find a transition toward electronic, or as much as possible, PDF application formats, and get away from a blizzard of paper. Or at least to always get a PDF in addition to the paper, so that, because then Jeff can post it on the website ahead of the hearing. We can share the application as needed, so.
Because right now, people don't have access to PDFs, is that what you're saying, or they do?
Well, the, right now, our, our standard application form does not require a PDF, or an electronic form.
Okay, got it.
It doesn't ask for it.
Okay. And we don't want Jeff to have to write it all?
Yeah, Jeff shouldn't have to scan everything, especially big sheets, he can't, I mean, they're huge. So I, I'm thinking at a minimum, can we simply add to the application a request, an optional request?
Yes.
For a PDF to complete all the documents, that would be the minimum, and then we'd still get the eight printed. I mean, maybe someday we could eliminate the eight printed, if we all get comfortable looking at it on screen. Some members felt that they liked, I mean, we saw today, the workshop, we had the big folding architectural drawing that is nice to have.
And why, why eight, so their files on the board?
That's a good question.
Do, what do we, what do you wind up with extras, is that what it is?
Oh, there's always, yes, I mean, you look through the files, it's a mess, it costs eight copies. At the end of the day, when everything is said and done, I need one paper copy of everything that goes into the official file.
So we could at least say five instead.
Well, there's five members, about six.
Five, six, yeah.
Because I think we're all looking at different things at different times, until we get used to the PDF.
But at least eight seems excessive.
Right.
That would be one small improvement.
Unless we get a sixth and seventh volunteer on the board.
But then, but you change the number today, it's not.
Good luck with that.
I'm just teasing.
But if it's not in the code, then we can change that number based on number, members, without having to go through a big process.
It's like always easy to, if we're getting PDFs as well, it's always possible to print more anyway.
I'd rather just look off one of yours anyway.
Everything we do, with all art materials, you know, the courthouse, with all different commercial matters, it's all, you know, PDFs. We're all used to that.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't see any reason to have, I mean, up until now, we didn't have good Wi-Fi here, so that was a, a big hurdle, but now we do. Jeff, when the code says, the, the form to be used in applying may be amended from time to time by the village board, are we, is the board, is this board allowed to amend requirements such as, that we've been talking about, such as for, format, which is not the application form itself?
Yes, yeah, you can amend. Yeah, you can amend any, your requirements to include digital copies and...
Without going to the trustees?
Yes.
Okay, because earlier we, we deleted the requirement of the environmental assessment form, we did not get the trustees, and, and, so that was okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we can, this would just be something added to the instructions?
Correct.
Okay, so then, um, is everybody fine with changing the instructions as follows? Requesting a, a PD, a digital file such as PDF of the complete application? And reducing the number of requested paper copies to six?
And perhaps, uh, asking for, you know, and phrasing it however, what you think is best, uh, you know, photographs of the surrounding...
Right, yeah.
Um, neighbors, properties, uh, to show how the, uh, proposed development on the applicants' property will affect neighboring properties, you know, visually and...
Is that word requesting, or is that the word, is it more appropriate for us to say encouraging?
Well...
Does it not matter?
Yeah, either way you want to say it is fine with me. And we're gonna ask for it anyway.
Right.
I, I, I'll need it, you know, because, you know, you don't want to go scooping around everybody's property all the time. Pitcher tells a thousand words, you know?
I think...
And if, once we have Wi-Fi, we can almost get Google ourselves, but I'd rather have the applicant bring it.
Yeah.
Because our time is precious.
I think applicants will appreciate being encouraged to do get those photos, it's not a big deal for them. And they, they probably realize it will help, help them in their presentation. They'll do it, the, the more experienced ones do it already, so it's a good thing.
So should we have a motion?
Oh, and, and, and a final change, um, can, can we put on there, um, asking for their email address? That, there's no, nothing on there now that asks for their email address.
Yes, we should.
Um, but see, the logical place for that would be on the application form itself, but apparently we can't change that without the trustees' approval. So, is there any, um...
Our instruction sheet, we send out, right?
Yeah. We can change the instruction sheet.
Right.
We can't change the application form, where they give their name, their address. That would be the logical place to ask for the...
But this way, it assists you and, and then to send immediate responses to applications, right?
Yes, if I have the email address.
Right.
Uh, we need some way built into the process that harvests their email address reliably.
Yeah, on the building permit application, it...
Yeah.
It's required. And ninety-nine percent of the time, people do include it. We do get into an instance like we just had recently where really the handwriting wasn't very legible. So you're kind of guessing to us to what the email address is, but...
But I, I don't normally get the building permit application. So, um, how about if I just add to the application a request for their, to the instructions, a request for their email address?
You know, let me talk to Marie in the morning. I find it, I'm hard pressed to think that adding a line that says email address is something that was required in the whole application to go before the board for approval.
Right, it's a waste of their time. It should have been on there.
Yeah, we're not changing, you're not changing anything substantive or any, that changes any of the requirements or anything that, um, impacts the code. Whereas we're asking for one more piece of information. So I'll check with her in the morning on that.
I mean, as, as the chairman, you've probably experienced difficulty getting in touch with people. Yeah, well, you know, we're, we're here volunteers, so anything that expedites us, and they're making applications that have a public, open effect, so there is no real privacy issue here.
Well, that's a, a good point, actually. It doesn't even ask for their phone number. There's like no way to contact them on this, on the form itself.
Well, that, that's not fair to any, you know, chairman who's trying to do their best to make all these contacts.
Oh, no, 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 on the referral to the zoning board, which has a phone number.
Okay, that's a start.
Well, it also hasn't even, I mean, you probably feel less inclined to text them than to email them, right?
Emailing is, yeah, easier.
And it's easier to get documents across an email than it is on a text.
Yeah, email is the ideal.
Yeah.
I mean, usually, usually, I find out one way or another, but, um, right, if you could ask Marie, or there's just so much...
Yeah.
Hey, you know, even on the building, um, application, but, you know, again, maybe that's something that...
If it was, put on that, that would solve the problem. If, um, if Charlotte can freely update her referral form, then...
Right, then we know we have it.
Then she'll have it, and we'll have it. So that would be another way.
Because we need that referral to do anything with, I mean, we can't take action without it.
Yeah, if she wants to do that, that would solve the problem too.
So to the extent that we can amend our own instructions, um, you know, in line with what you just mentioned, you know, I move that we make such changes to our instructions if, if the motion is so needed. I think that probably, in this case, it's probably devoted, so I'm gonna take that motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Eric, anything that makes your job easier? All in favor?
Thanks.
Building moratorium.
Yeah, building moratorium, that's right.
All right, that was it, that's all I had. Anyone else want to raise anything?
No. Move to a adjourn the hearing, because I think we don't have to...
Adjourn the meeting, second.
Okay, Laura seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to see you're feeling better.